Today is January sixth, twenty 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 three. This is the Bluff Town Council Work Session. Roll call.
Just Sosa.
Jim Sayers.
Luann Hook.
Anne Leppen.
Erin Nelson serving. Sorry, Erin Nelson serving as town manager.
And Brant Murray said he'll be joining us shortly. So. As I indicated, when I asked to do this work session, I recognized it's during the time that we wanted to take off and I promised to hold it to an hour or so. We're going to stick tightly to the agenda and try to kick through this. At the end of the hour, I'm going to jump off. So. I'd really like us to all be able to participate, but. So starting with that, let's start with number one. Discussion of the possible revisions to the procurement policy. And I'm going to turn this over to Erin, who's going to screen share and she's also. She did the primary work on the revisions and I just reviewed them. So Erin, I'm going to mute.
Alrighty, so I know this is a pretty. Let's see, help me find this. So sorry. Procurement policy. So. There's a lot of information in this document. So I guess I should start the question with, has everyone reviewed this? And if so, or if not, maybe this would be something that needs to be moved, but let's start with, has everyone reviewed my proposed revisions?
I have.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright.
I'm, yes, I'm, I'm nodding my head. Sorry.
Sorry, I can't. No, 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 sorry. I can't see anyone right now. So the biggest thing, I think. I would, I would ask if there were any specific areas that you want to address. Linda had sent me a message separately regarding the potential to look at like donations and talking about either like donations or fundraising and, and how that would play into this. As I thought about it further, I do think we could add something. Or we could add something referencing another policy regarding donations and fundraising. As that's kind of a pretty, pretty specific area. So it's possible we could do a policy for like donations, fundraising and grants or something like that, or maybe grants would be a separate. Separate item, but as I was looking through, it's gonna make you dizzy for just a second, as I was looking through. Some other policies, you know, from other towns, they did talk about referencing donated funds.
So Erin, prior to your coming on board, we, when we took over the CCC. Chris McAnany did write a policy on donations and how to handle all of that because the idea initially had been to raise as much money by donation as possible and we haven't done that, but I think if we pull that policy out. We could either incorporate it or just reference it. I think it's pretty thorough.
Wonderful. I will look at what we have and probably just a reference would be the easiest way. And so I'll move, move that to an area in this policy that makes the most sense. Perfect. Let me run back up. Close your eyes if you get dizzy quickly. We're just gonna run back up. I had a couple very specific questions that I did want to address. So since we have the PTIF account that should, that you know, we're going to be moving money into, I thought we should probably specifically address that under funding and accounting. So if everyone's comfortable, I can put together some specific language regarding that account, maybe with help from our accountant as to what would, what would make sense as we reference that specific account. Would that work for everyone?
Is this language not adequate?
So you, there are going to be just a couple of different changes specifically around like who the authorized signatory is. So we have Linda as the authorized signatory as opposed to two. And so, yes, I more just calling it out that we, we have this other, other funds now.
I'm kind of in favor of just keeping things as simple as possible, as long as they meet the law and they meet the needs of the audits. You know, I. I don't know that if we have to name the PTIF in order to modify this lang-, use this transfer language. It looks like right now it gets the job done and if there's no danger of fraud or mismanagement or anything, I just, I would, I would just recommend keeping things as simple as possible, as long as possible.
Sure thing. I am a, I need to stop showing my screen to get Brant in here. So I am fearing, keep it super simple. Yes, Linda.
I, what I would like to see, I did do the transfer yesterday because I wanted to know how it's done. And it's a single, simple accounting thing. What I would like to, would suggest is putting that transfers are on the agenda and voted on by the council.
Okay.
And I think Linda, that making a note of that, that they get on the agenda and voted on is, is a good idea. But I think that that's exactly the policy we followed for that transfer, the five fifty. Is we had it on the agenda, we discussed the dollar amount and we voted on it. And Erin, from an accounting view, this is actually. This, this is a question, this isn't a challenge. This is not actually a signatory because it's an internal transfer. Would that be correct? So maybe looking at what the language is that, that would normally be used to indicate a transfer versus a signatory. Does that make sense?
Or am I? Yep. So I will specifically look at this phrase right here on all town checks and fund transfers. And then just make it very specific and yet simple to understand the, the differences between PTIF and your regular accounts, if everyone is okay with that.
Perfect. I should note that Erin has let Brant in, hi Brant, and he was let in prior to nine oh nine.
Alrighty. I have a couple of questions around specific dollar amounts. So currently, and, and this one does affect me, so I won't. It just, that's, you know, conflict of interest. Clearly I am not voting on anything, but. So the clerk, as the purchasing agent, can authorize routine expenditures up to a thousand dollars. So there are salaries such as the town managers, which are over a thousand dollars per check. So totally fine if you keep that of, at a thousand dollars, but it could change how Linda routinely processes some of those transactions.
So would five thousand work better?
Might, might be a lot.
I, you know, I think that. I would, I would actually say go to five because it, this spells out recurring nature. It doesn't say to make a one-time purchase of five thousand.
You could also remove payroll expenses if, if that's an easier way to do it. Either, either option I think would work.
Probably payroll expenses would be an easier fix.
Yeah. Let's do that. We'll just straight through that. So we'll keep the thousand and then remove payroll expenses. And maybe just add a note about payroll expenses as a separate non-dollar amount fixed recurring expense.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Okay. Other specifics in here, and please call out, you know, if there's anything that you see major. So in talking about the budgets, we've had, you know, a little bit of an organizational change and so the hope would be that my role would support the mayor in putting together the estimates for the budget each year. And so I added town manager and town accountant, but the mayor is still responsible for presenting this to the public.
That's fine with me.
That works for me.
I was gonna say, Anne, you're the big one. Okay, good.
This, and Erin and I talked about this just real briefly because the mayor is responsible for presenting it and. But I absolutely want to be sure that the town manager and the town accountant are the ones doing the, the heavy lifting and the numbers because when I'm not around and somebody else is stepping into this, they may be deterred by the fact that they've got to do a whole budget, whereas the support system of having a manager and an accountant on board really makes it a, a much less burdensome job for the mayor. So thank you, Erin, for putting that in.
Absolutely.
Do we, what about the? What's the word I want? I should know this. Okay, the other budget that we, when we read, when we read.
Amended budgets?
amended, thank you. The amended budget, do we need a public hearing for that or was that?
So those definitely do require public hearings. I don't recall seeing amended budgets in here. I do think that that's a good thing to call out though, so I can put. I can reference that. I will read through this super deep, but I will add amended budgets.
Then Erin, were there other areas?
What the policy currently considers as a minor purchase is anything less than a thousand dollars. And I'll just kind of go through these tiers really fast. So minor purchases are less than a thousand dollars. Competitive proposals are required for purchases between one thousand and forty thousand dollars. So that would look, that is not like a sealed bid. Sealed bids are for anything over forty thousand dollars. But for a competitive proposal, the purchasing agent should look for at least three vendors. But I thought there was a couple of things we could look at. We could look at the number of vendors required and then this range of a thousand to forty thousand. And the idea, I'm gonna stop sharing just so I can let some folks into this meeting. Sorry, folks.
Yeah, I would like to see that raised from a thousand to, I mean, everything is going up and the stuff that we need to buy sometimes is up around three grand. So I'd like to see that limit moved up to about three, three, probably three or four for technology purposes.
And I think.
Gives you the opportunity to, if a printer goes out, you just get one, you know, get, keep things moving. Same thing with the, the. Well, we've got to think about the fire kitchen and stuff like that too. So yeah, I think three or four grand would be good.
I think the forty is too low also. I think we need to go higher on the forty.
I think both of those in line with other government entities would be very, very reasonable. Any other suggestions? We'll start with the minor one first. Anyone have strong feelings as three to four? Anything else in there?
Go, go to four. I mean, you know, if, if the cameras go out or if something that Craig needs or something, you know, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen, but. We've got problems with heating systems and stuff. I mean, four thousand is not that much money nowadays, unfortunately.
And what's important too is you all still approve these purchases, you know, it's, it's not like these just go, go by. It just gives us more, more flexibility and ability to meet the, the entity's needs.
So hold up a second. That, what I read, it says that the clerk can approve of purchases less than a thousand dollars. It doesn't say that the town council approves them.
So you would still vote to pay the bills, but yes.
Yeah, we vote to pay the bills, but like the, the recent instance where like I asked to buy some tools, there were eighty dollars. That went to an agenda item, but that would just get approved by the clerk and it would just get spent and get added to the list in a normal situation?
Yes, that's correct.
And so up to three thousand, so like somebody could buy something for three thousand if the clerk approves it.
That's what this, this, that's what this policy would say, yes.
Does that include reimbursements?
The clerk would approve the reimbursement prior to purchase.
Okay.
And just so that you know, for that kind of thing, yeah, I need invoices. I would send that, I mean, if you come to me, there's a good chance I'm gonna send you to the mayor or town manager for something big or even for something small. I need to know that they approved that purchase. So, so it's not just, so it's not just my policy. My policy is to check.
Well, the, the policy written here says that you can approve it and going forward, whoever is the clerk, whether you're the clerk or somebody in the next council, the clerk has the approval to approve up to whatever amount we say. You don't have to ask anybody else. It says you can do it.
And that's what Linda's.
You may do it, but you, but it doesn't say you must do it.
And she may, she may choose to consult or the clerk may choose to consult with someone else before it's approved. That, that's kind of inherent to whatever.
It's always, it's always good to get advice, but it, 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 this does read that in my mind. If I'm missing something, tell me, but it seems to me like it gives the clerk full range up to that amount.
Well, it does. It does do that, but it also doesn't limit the clerk in consulting with someone else. It's just like the mayor has to do the budget. But trust me, when I'm doing the budget, I'm consulting with Linda and Erin, the auditors and the accountant, you know. I'm not doing it in a dark room, doing it by myself. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And we could also, you could add another category. So if you wanted to keep the idea of like a minor purchase less than a thousand, there could be a category between like one thousand and five thousand that would have a different set of regulations and then from like five to fifty or sixty is when you do the competitive and then pass that as the sealed bid. If you wanted to look at something like that, or we can just keep it simple, that minor purchases are less than four thousand dollars.
I, I would. I like that category separation, just to make it a little more simple and takes a little more pressure off of somebody approving something that then they get in trouble for.
And then everybody remember that emergency purchases or emergency authorizations like the cattle guard. Needing to get that done, couldn't wait. You know, so there are things like that that just fall in that emergency category. It doesn't mean we don't discuss and vote on the expenditure payment. But the need to act is now. It's not, you know, two weeks down the road. Okay, Erin, go ahead.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, is there consensus to go ahead and add another category between one and four? And then do the next category, competitive proposals between four, and what would you like to see this increase to?
Eighty?
Yeah, I'd say at least eighty.
Great.
You know, and let's, as an example, the fire suppression. You know, if we end up piecemealing, we could easily be going to eighty or a hundred thousand on each piece and we aren't gonna try to get three bids for every single piece of a project. Yeah, that sounds good.
Alright, and then competitive sealed bids would be over eighty thousand. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Alright.
Yeah, thank you.
And then I do have a couple, just for the sake of time, trying to keep this to an hour. There are a couple processes that I just called out because I'm like, oh, I don't know if we have these processes, but if it's okay, I will touch base with Linda to see what we already have in place and then I can bring it back to the council to make sure that in what we're referencing, we have available. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright.
I have a, a comment. I've got notified that people are waiting to get in and I used to have that ability. I can't let anybody in.
Let me see here. I don't show. Can you ask them to try to, try to rejoin? Because I don't show anyone in the queue right now. Thank you, Luann. Alright, when, when I hear that noise again, I will. Okay, so the other, the other pieces are pretty big additions, but it's referencing specifically the sealed bid process. We just didn't have a very detailed out sealed bid process. And so in going through projects like CBDG, there are things that have come to my attention that are pretty common to have with sealed bids, including pre-bid conferences, amendments to your bid packet. And then how we actually go through the bid award process. And so I just wanted to put some more specifics in our policy. So we're not starting and reinventing the wheel each time we go through a bid. We have it written down as to what it looks like. So I would just ask folks, you know, I know everyone's read through this, but if there are any questions or things that you think are missing, I also want to sit on this, you know, before, before this goes to vote, just to make sure I'm not missing anything. But I just wanted to make the process very clear so we know how we go through a bidded process. Does that make sense to everyone?
Clarity is great, Erin, and that's really important that we aren't doing one thing with one bad bid and doing something else with another. So I think the explicit policy on this is, is important. Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay.
So I've put the review, discussion and vote on, not for the tenth, but for the seventeenth, if that works for everybody.
Excellent. Okay, so I will have, I will have this all drawn up. If anyone has any additional thoughts, let me know. The only other one I wanted to know, and maybe this is going to be a separate policy, or maybe we already have this policy, but a discussion of, do you want to add a specific section in your procurement policy for government contracts? And essentially, I would just say, you'd have to follow the government or state laws. It's not super common, but just do you want it in there?
Uh, sure, if that's all it is, is just sort of a disclaimer that we're going to follow the government or state laws, yeah.
Okay, I'll find the appropriate spot to put that in, but as we get more comments, we definitely have more.
Is that like with the county and that kind of thing? Like when they do our roadwork and that sort of thing?
So Lu, what that's, I think referring to is like when we do the CDBG grant or the ARPA funds or any of those specifically in there, it tells you how you have to follow it and we have to actually acknowledge that we've read that section. I think that's what Erin's, and Erin, if I'm wrong, just jump in.
Yeah, so essentially government and state contracts override our policy as, as they should, unless we are more detailed in a specific area. And so it's just referencing that you would follow their policy as opposed to ours in that circumstance.
Perfect, thank you.
Linda, did you have something?
Um, yes. One thing that, what, what about adding the amount of time it takes for us to pay bills? Is that, you know, was a problem, people wanting to get paid immediately. In terms of, you know, private contract, or contract labor.
Yes, absolutely. That is part of the reason this came up. Thank you, Linda. What, as clerk, what do you think would be appropriate? You know, I know net thirty is always something that I always, you know, hear, but, but what, what would you like to see? What makes sense for our business at our size?
What we're doing right now is net thirty and it's mostly just the two leases that we do. But the other important part is at least three days for, for checks.
Okay, I can definitely put together some verbiage on that, but yes, thank you for reminding me. That's a huge one. So I think what would probably be appropriate is we have a maximum. And then we know internally that, you know, it will probably happen before that, but in terms of our obligations, it would be thirty days. So, so I'll put that in there. Thank you.
I, I just, I was gonna put it in the chat, but it's closed off as well, but there are still some problems of letting people into the meeting. I don't know, it's part of this public meeting, being able to walk in the door and not have to get let in the door. But still, some that aren't getting in.
Okay, could you, who, who is trying to get in?
Gary Lichtenstein, he's mostly waiting, you know, to talk emergency things.
Okay. I'm, I'm so sorry, does he have access? So it is a work session, so we're probably not taking any public comments and
Right, right.
No, definitely we can send him the link. It does. I will talk with you offline, but it's possible that if he does not have a Google account, he will have issues accessing the meeting. We've had this in one of our other meetings. But I haven't seen any, any indication that he's been trying to get in.
Okay, so let's, let's figure that a different issue and I'll tell him he'll have to watch on YouTube.
Yeah, and he could go to YouTube. He can go to our website now. I would advise him, go to the website and make sure he's on our active link.
Okay, and then we can figure out the, letting the public in later. Thank you.
Here's a phone number too.
Okay, so if we're done with item one, let's go to number two, which is a discussion of position and responsibility for the Bluff Community Center Manager and the need to advertise. And so Erin, do you want to screen share on that as well?
Yes. Alright, and everyone should have received a copy of this job description. Alright. So just one thing to note before we go through, because of our current CBDG contract, this job will need to be posted on the Utah Employment Services website. However, this is clearly an in-person role. And maybe I should, maybe that's one thing I can add to this. This, this is, this is not remote. This is an in-person role because of the need to access the community center so frequently.
Right. Good suggestion. So it goes on the workforce, is that what you're saying? Utah workforce, okay.
Yep, and I can coordinate that with that entity. Did anyone have any questions about the overview, the key responsibilities? Do we need to add anything to the responsibilities or desired skills?
It looks good to me.
I have one thing on the second page at the top, second bullet. It says monitors inventory, inventory orders, supplies. If other people orders their own supplies, it really complicates things for me. I would like them to work with me. I, I mean, I, we've been doing it this, this way for four years, so, and it works well. And we don't normally order a whole lot anyway.
I'll change that to coordinate supply order with clerk.
Thanks.
Would it be easier to give them a budget?
No.
Okay.
And here's why. Fire Mesa Kitchen had a disaster with the budget. It just doesn't work to monitor a budget when, you know. It's already in our budget, so there's a line item for budget for community center and employees and all that. And we just, if we're creating too many budgets, it gets lost. That being said, you know, certainly if people disagree, we can, when we're voting on this, which will also go on the seventeenth because the tenth is jammed. You can disagree as you wish. But I thought it looked good.
Excellent. Alright, so the biggest one is the compensation range. So I'd like to remind the council, so this is a managerial position. So we do have this individual managing maintenance and custodial staff. So there, there is an aspect of management that I think is important to recognize. We also are requiring this person to have a really flexible work schedule and not flexible to them, flexible to us in that they, you know, they need to meet the, the renters' needs and timelines.
Well, they're also dealing with the public and they've got some real competencies they have to be able to demonstrate really frequently. What were you thinking about the hourly compensation, Erin?
So, that's a great question. So I would advise the council to definitely, the, the reason that we want to go with hourly is because it, it is variable. So the prior community center manager was receiving a monthly fixed salary. So that's why I said, said hourly. I do think this position should be paid in terms of, like I said, the, the items already listed, but also the amount of skill required. So skilled positions should be paid more. And so if you're asking for, you know, great communication, timeliness, things like that. I think a range, and, and this would be, you know, for the individual, a range between twenty-four and thirty would be appropriate.
So I, my concern on going hourly is that it So I, my, um, concern on going hourly is that it leaves it wide open to getting really expensive. There's a lot of open-ended, I'm cleaning this, I'm supervising this, I'm staying at the whole meeting. Uh, I feel like if it was a monthly salary that they can count on and they can do, then you have a, a final look to see if the job's getting done. Are you getting a lot of complaints because they're not answering? Are you getting, you know, whatever complaint wise? But also like you walk in and, and the, the cleaners are getting supervised, it's getting cleaned. The lights are turned off, it's ready to go, the equipment's put away and so on. It's, it's just a, it's as a manager to have to report every hour that you worked and what you did on that hour. And to feel like, oh gee, I just charged them another 20 bucks to be here and I really don't need to be here. I, so that's the, as a manager, it's, you get a lot of work done in your head different times and to have to report all those hours doesn't, like if, if somebody pops in and gives you one email, what do you do? Charge an hour? So I, I just think that having a flat fee for the salary for the month. And then I would propose giving a percentage of every rental. Otherwise you can get a manager in there that's like, eh, I don't want to rent to them. I'll just, you know, make, do whatever. And vice versa, if, if we get more rentals, then there's more income to pay the, the, the utilities, pay the equipment. Get that stuff maximized and then give them a percentage of that which, which correlates into extra work, extra hours.
And correlates into more clerk time and more computations. Um, I would oppose doing it that way for several reasons. One is I anticipate, and this is just me, I anticipate that should we get the fire suppression system up and running and should we get the CDBG up and running, which I'm sure that will happen in the next couple of months. We are going to need extra help with managing all of that work and all that construction. And I would hope that this person could help out with that and move into increasing this job, um, more fully. With that idea being, that would mean we'd have to be breaking out hourly, what's been on CDBG, what's been on fire suppression? And what's been on maintaining the community center? And so I don't see that going to that system is beneficial, um, to this position. And we already have people that we pay, uh, by the hour who have not abused it.
No, I'm, I'm not suggesting there'd be abuse, but it's just a lot of paperwork to keep track of an hourly.
What's, what's the approximate hours per week that have been worked by the manager? Do we have any, um, notion of how many hours per week, uh, the manager has been working over the last year, for example?
Well, last month it was 11 hours for the month. Um, and I've been doing this, you know, paying hourly. I have a system. I haven't had any problems. Occasionally it takes people a while to get me their paid, um, payroll. So really isn't a problem.
And the, the other problem, Jim, that I, that I talked with Erin and I've talked with Linda about is when we took over the community center and Fire Mesa Kitchen rentals, we had a pretty strong first year of rentals because they did. And then we hit COVID. So we don't have a good track record the last three years. In fact, this year it looks like it's creeping up and I suspect that with all the, the restrictions having been lessened on COVID, we're going to see more rentals, which makes it really difficult to judge. And quite honestly, anybody who takes this job who wants to go down there at seven o'clock in the evening after they've settled in for the evening to help somebody hook up a computer or figure out the, what, the internet. I'm willing, you know, if people want to go to a salary, then I say we kick that salary up to a really commensurate amount. So that person feels compensated every regular whatever. But
Well, this isn't going to break the town and I, I don't know that it needs to be discussed a whole lot. Uh, even if the person were putting in 20 hours at $25 an hour, we've got $500 a month, which I think is pretty reasonable for the amount of space we've got in the community center and all the stuff that's going on there. So uh, I would go with $25 an hour. That's, seems reasonable to me. You know, between 24 and 30.
Sarah, were you anticipating a, like overtime hours? Or a cap on what's allowed, like up to 40 hours a week or like, do you have any cap on it on that end?
We don't need it right now. If in the future we needed it, we could do it, but
A preventative thing. I'm just thinking budget, well, like, you know, cleaning the parks, for instance, can run into, you know, somebody's idea of one thing and somebody's idea of another. So, you know, just for somebody coming in and looking at the job, how many hours are allowable?
Well, why don't, why don't we do this in order to, to move us through this agenda by the end of the hour? Everybody go through it, make your suggestions, um, to Erin. And then we'll have it on for discussion and possible vote on the 17th and see where we are. And maybe be able to, each of us succinctly state on the 17th, why we want to do it the way we want to do it and see what we can come up with.
The way I feel about it is if we're building infrastructure, let's go ahead and set it up. This hourly thing and we're not, we don't have to worry about the manager's going to be monitoring all that with. So I think we could do this hourly thing and, and keep building our infrastructure for our operations.
So I'll move this to the 17th and Erin, if you can just maybe send a reminder to everyone to put their thoughts together so we can see it. So number three is pretty, uh, a pretty quick item discussion of the Bluff Cemetery. I've been told by Mac McDonald that he is, he has been working with the commissioners over the last year to appoint boards for various things like the water board, et cetera. And he is now prepared to take on the cemetery board of the state because it is still not properly registered. And I'd like everyone to think about what route. We don't have to have that discussion today, but this month, what route do we want to take? On the cemetery? Do we want to assert that that cemetery is within our incorporated area? And we want to take over the managership, the board appointees, et cetera? Do we want to relinquish that control to San Juan County and say, okay, we'll drop our objection? Um, and we'll notify the state that we're dropping it? Or is there a third alternative, fourth alternative? But we need, we need to make a decision as to how we'd like to move that, that piece forward and what stamps do we want to take?
I think we should assert that we want the cemetery and then move forward with that, whatever that entails.
I agree. We've had, uh, sea roads that were given us by the county and we know what the condition of that was. Uh, I don't think, I think the county is too large and spread out, uh, and there might be commissions sometimes that will really pay attention to these kinds of things, but there might be uh, commissions at times that will not. And, uh, this is going to be a pretty low priority with the county. And I would, I think it's going to be a strong priority with our town. The cemetery is, is really a, a, a feature of this town that, uh, should, is, is really part of the town's story. And, uh, we should, we should assert our authority. Thank you.
I think that was very well said.
So hearing no strong opposition, I will put that on the agenda for the 17th as well. And I will do a little bit of research with the state again as to what we need to do. Kind of the same thing for number four. This is a discussion of the date for the public hearings on the request for use or however you want to frame it on, uh, roads and alleys and property right of ways. So what we need to do is set a date or at least a target date for us to be telling people you need to follow the policy for making that request, which for alleys, right off the top of my head, means you probably need to have a survey for your alley, um, for that deed at the end, if you get it or if you don't. So we know what we're talking about. And I would suggest that the date be set far enough out that people have time to figure out what they need to do to bolster their requests because we have to go through a public hearing and notice and specificity.
What triggers a hearing?
The request. It's a requirement of the law. You have to have a public hearing on a request to vacate, use anything on town property like that. But if everybody remembers Chris Mack, and he sent us a pre-detail walkthrough of what we have to do, but it includes a public hearing with notice in the San Juan record and on the public notice website.
Has Chris been able to do any research back there that I'd asked for, just for clarification on some of that Platts and stuff?
Yeah. I've sent it all out, but it's been a long time ago, Brandt. So if we set the date of a target date to get this on, I'll try to compile the surveyor's notes, the attorney notes, the plat map, all of that.
That's probably, I think that's part of, of this operation for me.
Yeah. And that's part of what is required by the notice and public hearing. That's why people who might have a request for an alley. Um, and I'm not just, the one alley that is really a road that's already been voted on by the commission. That's a whole other issue. I'm talking about people now making a request for an alley, a right of way, a road where it hasn't already been, handled by the county is a polite word. So I'm thinking we should really be looking at February or the first part of March in order to get all of our ducks in a row and do this correctly. What does everybody else think?
Let's do February. It's a little less busy in town. If we could get it in February, I think that would be good.
But we also have this whole strategic planning going on and, and this whole alley issue might become a, you know, we, we've got a lot of alleys in town in the, the street and like the, the one uh, street that's been requested to be vacated, uh, is part of a bigger picture.
So are you suggesting further out in February?
Well, after we figure out what the strategic planners want us to do with it. And it, it, and I'd like to declare my conflict of interest because of the alley being bordered on that alley that was requested, that the alley that takes off six, south of Sixth West.
Should you even be discussing any of it then?
Well, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
And it's just
Let's focus on the date, everybody. Let's try to focus on a target date so that we can look at it. Do you want to wait until after strategic planning on January 25th to set the date in February or March? Or do you want to set it now?
And the date is for abandoning a street?
The date is for the public hearing for public to make their request, if they have one of us to vacate, change the use, do whatever they're doing under our policy.
I think we should do February.
Yeah, February is fine then.
Knowing how much work this could potentially be for landowners, I'm going to suggest we go to the end of February then. To allow for as much possible time as folks.
Would that be the week of the 20th?
It would be.
That'd be fine with me. The 20th itself is a federal holiday, so let's not forget that. But I think the 23rd is a Thursday that might
How about the 23rd? Would that work? Can we target that?
Let's do that.
Yes.
Okay. A six o'clock time, does that work for folks?
Yeah.
And
Yes.
Sorry. This is an area, you know, specifically because this requires so much from the landowners. Maybe this is something that we can put, I can put on the website regarding like what is required. Um, in case we have any additional people who, who, you know, are going to be bringing things to the council. Does that, is that okay?
Yeah. I thought that if you and I worked on putting together like a packet and instruction, like a following what Chris told us and what's in our, our policy already, I think it's pretty clear, but there, there's a case and I, I sent it to everybody three or four months ago that walks through all the steps we have to follow, which are extremely detailed. And if you miss one of those steps, then it's avoid transfer. For instance, if you transfer one half of an alley, rather than transferring one half of an alley to one landowner and one half to the other, and you transfer that whole alley to a landowner, that's avoid transfer. The law is very clear that if you have two separate landowners, they each get one half of the alley. And so it gets very complex and there's a lot of detail. So Erin, you and I can work on it and then go to Chris with any legal questions on it and try to get something up, but that's, I'll put down six o'clock, Thursday, the 23rd of February.
So I have a, a question on, is this the hearing for like all of the alleys in town that people have questions on? We're going to have every property owner?
Why, why we have every property owner? It's only if they make a request, Lou.
But that's what I mean. That you would do, everybody who puts a request in, this would be the hearing to address all of those?
Yep. And these are short hearings. They have to first comply with all the criteria, all the documentation, because if it's not there, we're not going to hear from them. If people don't follow, then we'll have to screen each of these for following the process. If they follow the process, then they're on the agenda. Then we hear, we do not make a decision at that moment. We look at what we've got, then we make a decision. Then there's the whole piece that people need to understand. It's not enough to get all through the process and us to vote. Then there has to be deeds and recording and fees and all kinds of things. So this is not a simple process. And so when people are thinking they want their alley, they need to be talking to any adjacent landowner and they also need to be, um, looking at the expense for the community center. But for everybody who wants it, and then maybe we'll just do it once a year, you know? We'll have a public hearing once a year for other people.
So is it enough time for you and the lawyer and Erin to get things together on our end to have it that quickly in February? Because we, you, I mean, we, as in you, have a lot going on with strategic planning and
Which is why I throw a March and the consensus was February. So we're going with the consensus and let's see where we go. If we get two weeks into this month, you better be sure that Erin or I will be saying, we can't get it all together to do it in February.
You want to do March? Let's go ahead and schedule March. That's all right.
Let, let's target February since we've got a consensus and let Erin and me, well, a lot of the work has already been done on our end. We have a lot of that information. If there's nothing else on that, then we'll go to five. Review a proposed agenda policy. I put this on here, but then I think in the last public meeting we had, I just reminded everybody, which is what I was going to do. The public needs to tell us on Thursday before our Tuesday meeting that they want to be on the agenda. They should tell, that person requesting to be on the agenda should say or be asked, are you doing a PowerPoint or a presentation because you don't have unlimited time? If it's a council member, try to get everything to Linda or me or to Erin by Saturday at the end of the day before that Tuesday, so that we can get it up and running. The last couple of months, we've kind of, well, last six months, we've kind of fallen from that and we need to get back on track because we can't be asking Linda to go out on Sunday evening to repost every Sunday. It, it's posted in three places and then the Utah public notice website. So just a reminder of that. Uh, go ahead.
This does say under agenda on the second page, it's 36 hours prior to the meeting. It's actually 36 hours prior to posting the meeting. The meeting has to be posted 24 hours in advance. So it's either 72 hours before a meeting or 36 hours before the meeting's posted.
So thanks. I think that's the big reminder is let's get them to, to Linda, me and Erin sooner rather than later. But for the public, definitely, if we don't have it by Thursday at the end of the day, we're just not going to be getting it on the agenda unless it's like a burning emergency, like Like, it really has to get on there. Number six, discussion of protocol and policy related to interaction with others during a public meeting. This was just a reminder that, um, a discussion I had with Chris McAnany, anything that we're doing in a public meeting has to be transparent. And this is true for the, true for the five of us, and the recording process. And so if you need to text somebody or let them know something, you need to say what you're doing, notes, if you're live, and we've had a couple of instances that drew this to my attention, is any discussion between any two of us is a violation. We shouldn't be whispering or passing notes or reminding, just say it out loud, you know? If it's important enough to, to be reminding somebody, just say it, you know, hey, can I remind you of this? Or what about this? The same thing is true for, for the public. And I noticed that my phone number, my personal number is the number I use for work. People have it. I take texts from people all the time during a meeting. I've got my phone off on silent. The only thing I'm looking at is time. I'm not looking at texts, because if I get a text, I'm now going to be reading it clearly. There was an issue, and I don't know if anybody listened on Tuesday to the commissioner meeting, but Johnny Miller gave some legal advice to the commission. I haven't listened to it. I think we all should listen to it. It's about public comment and interacting. And since I haven't lis- listened, we don't need to report on it right now, but I'd suggest we listen to it and think about, when, when you get a public comment, do you respond? Because once you respond, you start getting into some murky water. And so these are just reminders of protocol, and probably go back after we've all listened to that and done some discussion among ourselves about, do we need to revise our written protocol for conduct during a public meeting? Because the commission is in, is under investigation, and this is how it all kind of surfaced. And then the last, item seven. I'll read this, but in my pea brain, it has escaped me. We need to designate an emergency manager under state law. We revised that last year. As you probably recall, Chief Lot and I have been working on an emergency operation plan, and when I say we, it's more the operative we. Chief Lot is working on the plan. Erin, Linda, and I have been working with Tammy Gallegos on the emergency county plan, and I sit on the local emergency planning committee. So we're working on it, but we have to remain designated manager for the state, and we have to register that. So if everyone could think about what, who would be appropriate? It does not need to be someone on the council. Okay, Erin, go ahead.
Could you detail out what the responsibilities of this position entail?
Sure. Do you have, give me one second, let me step away. I'll be right back. So, the Emergency Management Act 53 hyphen 2A hyphen 101. It is 40, 50, 60, 63 pages in length. I have not completed going through it. This details the responsibility of the emergency manager. I've got it with me, I've been reading it. I will try to succinctly put something together, but it is very detailed.
Do you have a recommendation, Mayor? You and he appears to me to be the two candidates so far.
In fallback mode, not a fallback mode, under the, under the code, I am it. I don't have a problem with being it, but I think we need to, I mean, we obviously have to discuss it and vote on it, and I will try to summarize what those actual duties are. But we have to do it, and we need to get it done, because we should have really done it about six months ago, and it completely slipped off my radar until it came up in a meeting with...
There's a, oh, for incident management that we all know about, and through the fire and the white hat and the emergency stuff. So it seems to me that his policies should account for all that, with you the figurehead and, and the actual emergency person being, being Anthony. I'll stop right there.
So just give it some thought. I will try to get a summary out, but if you want to, to read it, it is in the code. It's very detailed. I might have downloaded it too, and if I did, I'll send it off.
Could, could you just repeat what the code, what one you're following there?
Sure. It is, in the Utah Code, it's 53, so 53 hyphen 2A, small a, hyphen 101, and it's called the Emergency Management Act. And according to this, if I read this correctly, oh, I, there are so many things a mayor can do that I wouldn't want to be doing. One of the things that you can do is override your law enforcement. Hello? In an emergency. So it's interesting, there's a lot of things that can be done, but mostly it's the emergency manager designation we need to have, so that if there's something that somebody, if I, understanding this correctly, let's say, uh, LaSalle runs into a problem, they can go to this, let's see who the emergency manager is, contact that emergency manager and say, hey, we're filling sandbags, do you have any help? So it's a touch point, but I will try to succinctly put something together that says what the duties are, and then we can get it on the agenda and vote and get that registered with the state.
I just have the comment that, you know, our fire chief has been technically trained in a lot of really technical stuff, and is very familiar with the technical equipment that we possess here in town and its capabilities and limitations. And I think that whoever the emergency manager is, should have that technical knowledge. So I'm, I think you know who I'm, I'm favoring here on that.
Well, and I think there are a couple of options, and that's what I've, I've thought about. I, I've thought about Chief Lot, Gary Lichtenstein is back in town, John DeLeggo. I mean, there are other people, and I, but I think that the, we need to have the discussion, and then the discussion with the person we're thinking of, because we can't just appoint them. And they have to know that their name is going to be that name out there. So...
And so on that line of thinking, that's basically delegating it to the county? The county is the one that provides our fire and our EMS?
No, this would be on behalf of the town, not delegating it to the county. So that's why it's really important to read through this. This is every, every entity has a separate designated manager who makes decisions for their entity. And it will dovetail into the county, and the county dovetails into the state, and the state dovetails into FEMA, and this gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So...
So like, for instance, we could, we could delegate our fire chief as a resident and a, and he's fire chief under the county, and that sort of thing would be an okay, as far as you've read?
I can't answer that question yet, Lou. I'm struggling to understand all of it myself, so...
All right. Well, they may have some input to, or, or other towns, what they've done, so. We're just so little, it's a lot of, that's a lot of responsibility that would be nice to delegate to somebody else.
So everyone, you know, in your spare time, read 60-some pages. Okay. Anything on other? It's 1001.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone holding out to an hour. See you back at the ranch.
Thank you.